I'm Letitia Marina.
And you guys are live. You guys are live. Sorry, you guys are live.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the September fifteenth regular meeting of the East Hampton Town Board. Carol, would you please read the roll call?
Present.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Present. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, we have one public hearing, which will be followed by a public portion where any member of the public may address the board on any topic. We ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then the board will offer various resolutions. Carol, if you'd please read the first public hearing notice.
We don't have Hugh today. Hugh was gonna come today.
He was in the waiting room right now.
Oh, he's in the waiting room? Okay, well, let's go to the waiting room and have Hugh King join us.
I have my makeup home once, too. Oh, she, he wanted you to do your.
Oh, yes.
I have it. Ready to go.
So Matt, if you could bring Hugh King on.
Hugh, if you could start your video.
How do I do that? Oh, start my video. I didn't know I had to do that. Is this something new?
No.
Good day, everybody.
Good day.
Okay, I have some announcements.
Yeah, that's great. Oh, isn't that funny?
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Are you our town crier today, or are you the?
I'm the town crier.
Now we see you.
Yes, the crier's hat. Okay.
Okay, and the bell, the bell, the bell. Yes, yes. Well, there are three announcements today, and then you're gonna get, you're going to get your assignments.
And I have my makeup assignment for you, Hugh.
Oh, that's right. Let's do that first. Thank you, Councilwoman Overby. I forgot about that. Go ahead.
All right, so the assignment was for women in gardening in East Hampton, and I know I'm gonna, there's a couple of crossovers here because my person was Mary Leland Kennedy Woodhouse. She was born in eighteen sixty-five in Vermont, and she died in nineteen sixty-one at the age of ninety-six, and she is buried at Cedar Lawn Cemetery. In the early twentieth century, East Hampton had two Mrs. Lorenzo Woodhouses. I know David talked about one. Emma was married to Lorenzo G. Woodhouse, and Mary was married to his nephew Lorenzo E. Woodhouse. So while Emma Woodhouse created a rustic Japanese water garden, Mary opted to hire a professional landscape gardener and created very formal gardens with Greek columns, urns, archways, and formal brick herringbone pathways. The formal gardens were part of the Woodhouse home on Hunting Lane called the Fens. After Emma's death, the Japanese water garden was open to the public, and Mary kept the paths open for public use through the thirties and forties. Emma's water garden was given by Mary Woodhouse to the Garden Club of East Hampton, who gave it to the village as a bird sanctuary with trails and is known today as the Duck Pond. Mary Woodhouse founded the Garden Club of East Hampton on August twenty-fifth, nineteen fourteen, and the club became an official part of the Garden Clubs of America in nineteen fifteen. Mary Woodhouse was the first president with a mission to, quote, "support local women with a passion for gardening and to educate others on its benefits," end quote. So I do want to say, Hugh, in researching some of these assignments that you've given us, other information kind of reveals itself as we go through and find what these, these people and, you know, what our shared history is, is that we come across. So what I came across with this one was something called the Cottage List. And the Cottage List was, this one, was published on July twenty-sixth, nineteen thirty-four. And what it did was it included the names of summer residents who would be at their homes during the summer. And then it also did, it included names of those renting a cottage and who the cottages they were renting from owned. So and for instance, you had the name of Jesse Spalding was gonna be in residence this, during the summer, and he lived on Lily Pond Lane. Or Mrs. John Talmadge, who lived on Ocean Avenue. And these would all be people that were now going to be in residence as of August the first. Then following that list of residents came the list of people who were renting. So that you saw that, that Wyman Aldrich was going to rent Ernest Miller's house on Doonmere Lane. And the list continues, and there must be a hundred or so people on each one. If it was just so easy today to be able to know who was here and who was renting, that, that would be lots of fun. But if you want to go back and research this, it's, the new, the site is the New York State Historic Newspapers, and they will give you the whole page and, and the, and the complete list if you want to look at it, plus the advertisements that are on either side of this list, which are just as much fun to read as anything else, including the phone numbers, which were East Hampton forty-four for one of the advertisements. So anyway, thank you, Hugh, for letting us do this and helping us educate ourselves as well.
Well, thank you, and the, your report was just as revelatory as the other four council people. And you know, the Cottage List was published in the Star each summer. You can go to the East Hampton Star Archives, and you could find it. Thank you. Now, it's so funny you mentioned the Nature Trail because on October first, there are two events going to happen. First is the Mulford Farm Festival, which will be between ten and two o'clock on the Mulford Farm, and it's going to include almost thirty different aspects of local history, including the Montauk Indian, the Dominie Family, Mary and Thomas Nimmo, Mary Nimmo Moran and Thomas Moran. There'll be the militia, the Shinnecock Indian Nation. There'll be songs. And then the town crier is going to be there answering local history questions, okay? Now, as part of that festival, Erwin Levy is going to be leading a walk down Doonmere Lane through the Nature Trail. And then you could wind up back on Newtown Lane to go to Herick Park because there's a harvest festival between eleven and five on the Herick Park grounds. So you'll be able to go to both of those between ten and five. And then the third thing that I want to mention is on September twenty-ninth at three-thirty at the Home Sweet Home Museum, the Village of East Hampton is going to dedicate the gardens in the memory of Loretta. Okay?
What time is that, Hugh?
Ceremony that day. Okay, and now your assignments. Well, it's September. Unfortunately, two tragic events happened in September besides nine eleven in our history. And the first was the, the, well, I don't know which one was first. They were very close. Well, let's talk about the free life balloon flight. How about Councilwoman Rogers and Councilwoman Overby dividing that up and giving us a short talk about the free life in nineteen seventy? And then Supervisor Vanskoyak, Councilman Lees, and Councilwoman Gonzalez, the hurricane of nineteen thirty-eight. There's plenty there that you could divide and decide which aspects of it you want to talk about, whether it's what happened in Montauk Springs, the Village of East Hampton, Wayne Scott, or the rest of the town. And we can, you've got about three weeks, I think, to do research, right? The next meeting's not until?
October sixth.
Yeah, no way to go. How about that? Is that enough?
That sounds great.
That sounds great.
And Hugh, can I just add one thing to the board also? Also, the cap off maybe October first. Amagans Life Saving Station is having Tim Dring at six o'clock to do an historical lecture. Tim Dring is the former president of the United States Life Saving Service Heritage Association and is perhaps the preeminent scholar in the Life Saving Service era. And it is gonna be a pleasure to have him there, and you can get more information at that organization's website, too.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know that. Thank you, Councilman Lees. Well, that ends our, have a good one.
Thank you so much, Hugh. It was great to see you. I'm looking forward to seeing you again on the sixth, if not before.
Okay.
Carol, if you'd please read the first public hearing notice.
Notices hereby given, the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton hold the public hearing town hall on Thursday, September fifteenth at eleven AM or soon thereafter, as this matter may be heard for the purposes of considering a proposed contract with the Village of Sack Harbor for fire protection and emergency ambulance service to be furnished by the village on behalf of the Fire Protection District, known as the East Hampton Fire Protection District, for the calendar year twenty twenty-three upon the following general terms. The fire department shall answer and attend all calls and said fire district and shall furnish firefighting vehicles and equipment and firefighting personnel. The fire department shall furnish emergency ambulance service, including vehicles and equipment and ambulance personnel to the district for the fire protection services during the twelve-month period of twenty twenty-three. The Sack Harbor Village shall be paid honor before February one, twenty twenty-three, the sum of forty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. For ambulance protection services during the twelve-month period of twenty twenty-three, Sack Harbor Village shall be paid honor before February first, the total sum of twenty-five thousand, fifty-three dollars and forty-four cents. And from such funds, the fire department shall be paid directly, the total sum of eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-seven cents honor before February one, twenty twenty-three, and the ambulance corps shall be paid directly, the total sum of two thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents honor before February one, twenty twenty-three. The town's total cost for fire protection and ambulance services under the contract is seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. The public hearing will be held live and in person by the Town Board and will be available electronically by video and teleconferencing and will be televised on local TV Channel twenty-two and available for livestream on the LTV website. The public shall be permitted to appear in person, but may also provide comments on the matter by hearing by calling three five one eight 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 six three three one. Any person or party wishing to be heard with respect to the foregoing may do so in person by agent, by attorney, or by teleconference to the live meeting or by written comment addressed to the East Hampton Town Clerk, one fifty-nine Panega Road, East Hampton. Comments may also be submitted to the Town Clerk by email to cbrannan@ehamptonny.gov. All comments must be received by the Town Clerk by the date and time of the public hearing. Please check the meeting agenda posted on the town's website for any changes and for updated information.
Thank you, Carol. Is there anyone here which has addressed the board on this matter? Matt, do we have any callers on the phone who wish to address the board on the matter of the fire district agreement?
There's no callers on the line right now.
I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. That brings us up to the public portion. Anyone wish to address the board on any matter? Jason, do we have any callers on the phone?
No, but we accidentally had the wrong phone lineup, so I'll let you know if anyone pops in. I apologize for that.
Okay. We'll give that a few minutes. In the meantime, we do have some resolutions to offer.
Great. Starting with Resolution twenty twenty-two, eleven twenty-nine, its approval of the warrant claims total three million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and six dollars and fifty-eight cents, and the utility warrant totals fifty-six thousand, thirty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution eleven thirty is to retain the services of Rebecca DiCipio for the Tax Receiver's Office. This is to assist in the tax preparation function on an interim basis at a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Eleven thirty-one is to authorize payments for past due invoices for, for Jane Libell in the amount of nine hundred dollars, and this is for the Fort Hill Cemetery plot sales.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Eleven thirty-two is to repurchase Fort Hill Cemetery plots from William Akala in the amount of seventy, in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Twenty twenty-two, eleven thirty-three is to reject bid EH twenty-two dash zero two nine. This was the YMCA roof replacement and associated work. We discussed this at Tuesday's work session as it was one point one million over budget.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
I'd like to offer Resolution twenty twenty-two, eleven thirty-four, appoint part-time recreational aid Jackson Trelese an hourly rate of fifteen dollars and fifty cents into the Recreation Department effective September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Eleven thirty-five is to appoint part-time recreational aid Taff High Sweater at an hourly rate of fifteen dollars and fifty cents per hour in the Recreation Department effective September sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Eleven thirty-six is a budget modification for land management, where we're bringing the amount of thirty-two hundred dollars from state aid mortgage tax to the same amount and the same for the line for tree maintenance of thirty, in the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Eleven thirty-seven is a budget modification for the joint fuel facility where we're increasing the budget lines for service other government village of East Hampton in the amount of forty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, and also budget line for miscellane revenue in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. We're also increasing budget lines, fuel purchase in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Eleven thirty-eight is a budget modification for recreation, where we're moving money from budget line for part-time salaries in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars to budget lines, other equipment in the amount of one thousand dollars, water, one thousand dollars, and fuel motor vehicles in the amount of three hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Eleven thirty-nine is a budget modification for the Montauk Gateway Utility Undergrounding Project, where some, some costs related to this project, we're gonna bring in LK McLean Professional Services. And for anticipated grant revenue to proceed, be received by New York State, we're increasing the revenue budget line for state aid, the Montauk Gateway Underground Project, the amount of eight thousand dollars, and also increasing the line for the expenditure budget line for the Montauk Gateway Underground Project in the same amount of eight thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass, carry.
Eleven forty is accept the bid EH twenty-two dash zero one five. This is for the Westlake Conference Station for a new IA sanitary system. This is going to Carter Melons in the amount of eight, eighty-seven thousand dollars for the installation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass, carry.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, eleven forty-one is accept the bid for EH twenty-two dash zero three one. This is the annual drainage con, drainage contracts A, B, and C. They're going to Keith Drimes Incorporated. For the bid of Keith Drimes is hereby accepted in the amount for contract for two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars for contract A and two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars for contract B and two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars for contract C.
I wonder if that's a typo.
Which one?
C.
No, so C is Montauk.
Three hundred dollars more.
It might be for Montauk.
Okay.
If not, I'll find out and amend it if we need to. I'll bring it back.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Eleven forty-two is a set bid EH twenty-two dash zero three four for the Springs Basketball and Tennis Court resurfacing for South Fork Asphalt in the amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass, carry.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, eleven forty-three is the set bid number EH twenty-two dash zero three three for the Stephen Hans Path Drainage Improvement, Improvements to South Fork Asphalt. Their bids were reviewed, and the bid is gonna be for the base amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and five cents and an alternate number one in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, which alternate number one is for steel-backed timber guide rails with timber posts for the total contract cost of one million, eight hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and five cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass, carry.
Eleven forty-four is the set bid EH twenty-two dash zero three two. This is for the last point, stormwater improvements and shoreline stabilization. This also goes to South Fork Asphalt in the amount of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass, carry.
Eleven forty-five is an RFP for EH twenty twenty-two dash one zero five. This is a license to utilize agricultural land in East Hampton. Proposal, the bid is, the bid is available for September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The proposal due back is October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. If anyone has any questions, please contact our purchasing department at six three one three two four four one eight three. There will be a site visit meeting to license the utilized agricultural land that will be held at the property, which is at one hundred eighty-six Cedar Street, East Hampton, New York, on Wednesday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two at eleven AM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Eleven forty-six is the Coral Fisher House Historical Site Management Plan authorizing resolution. We held this public hearing on September first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, eleven forty-seven is to authorize a lease extension agreement for ten years for Eco Farm. The town has previously entered into lease agreements for the town-owned farmland at Long Lane, East Hampton, with the East End Community Farm and Gardens. The lease expired in April, April thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Eco Farm has been successful operation, bringing many benefits to the community, including teaching children and families organic farming techniques, spreading information on organic farming and distribution of organic vegetables to the community. Both the Town of East Hampton and Eco Farm desire to enter into a lease for an additional ten-year period with two options for two additional five-year terms. This is subject to a permissive referendum, and for the lease, the premises is farmland for two hundred and twenty-five dollars per year per acre for the first five-year term, and two hundred and fifty dollars per acre for the second five-year term, and two hundred and seventy-five dollars per acre per year if there is an additional five-year extension, and three hundred dollars per year per acre if there is a second five-year extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, eleven forty-eight is Acabonic Grove Cemetery Conservation Easement to schedule a public hearing. The public hearing is on October sixth at two PM. And this is for the Jewish Center of the Hamptons, and again, it's a conservation easement at three-ten Old Stone Highway, East Hampton. The reviewing agency is the Planning Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Twenty twenty-two, eleven forty-nine is Acabonic Grove Cemetery Grant of Ascenic Easement to schedule a public hearing. This is October sixth at two PM. And again, it's the Jewish Center of the Hamptons. It is ascenic easement, and it is at three-ten Old Stone Highway. The reviewing agency is the Planning Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass and carry.
And I have eleven fifty, which is to authorize payment to Verizon Wireless for a past due invoice. It was ascertained by the IT Department records and verified by the Town Clerk's Office that there is a twenty twenty-one invoice for telephone services and equipment. And therefore, it is resolved that the town will pay the outstanding past due invoice in the amount of two hundred and five dollars, forty-two cents, and one in the amount of one hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-four cents, and the last in the amount of forty-one dollars and eight cents upon properly submitted voucher.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution twenty twenty-two, eleven fifty-one is a budget modification for insurance, and that is moving two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars from various insurance lines to various other insurance lines in the same amount.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution eleven fifty-two is a budget modification for the South Fork Commuter Connection Hampton Hopper, and this is to cover increased costs for the commuter connection Hampton Hopper service that the Town Board approved. And that is moving from state aid other in a revenue line in the amount of forty-eight thousand to increase the expenditure budget line for subcontractor costs in the same amount.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Eleven fifty-three is a budget modification for the trustees. This is moving one thousand dollars from outside professional to one thousand dollars subcontractor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution eleven fifty-four is to authorize attendance at New York State Sampo twenty twenty-two conference, and this is for the purchasing, senior purchasing agent, Jeannie Carosa, authorizing her to attend the Municipal Purchasing Officials' Annual Conference from October fourth to October seventh in Albany, New York, where registration lodging costs are not expected to exceed three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Eleven fifty-five is to accept bid number EH twenty-two dash oh two six. This is East Hampton Airport Terminal Parking Lot repairs, and that goes to Stasi Industries Incorporated, and that would be in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Eleven fifty-six is to extend contract EH twenty-one oh thirty-three compliance work at the airport fuel farm, and that's for Aventura Construction Corporation. And it's all that purchasing agents hereby authorized to issue purchase orders to Aventura Construction Company.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution eleven fifty-seven is Montauk Inlet Navigation Improvement Project Adopt a Secret Determination and Authorize a Project Partnership Agreement. And this is resolved, the Town Board has reviewed and considered the environmental assessment, part one, two, and three. And based on, upon the same, finds the proposed project will not have a significant negative impact on the environment. The Town Board hereby adopts negative declaration with regard to the proposed project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Eleven fifty-eight is to amend the Hampton Hopper Agreement for the South Fork Commuter Connection. And whereas the Resolution twenty twenty-two, three eighty-nine for a period of April first, twenty twenty-two through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the, and a cost not to exceed three hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, forty cents for an estimated two hundred and sixty-day service for thirteen hundred and sixty-four dollars and four cents per day. This is being amended to increase the service to estimated service days for twenty-three sixty-four rather than eighty-four previously. But with, we are gonna be running an additional bus, and that amount increase goes from, it'll be six hundred dollars per day more, goes from a daily rate of thirteen sixty-four oh four to nineteen hundred and sixty-four dollars and four cents. And that would be retroactive to September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, cast and carry. Eleven fifty-nine is to authorize agreement with Forte Payment Systems, and this is for e-check payments for automated clearinghouse check. Were not able to be accepted due to difficulties, the service provider's processing software and other issues. We are therefore resolved that the system, that the proposal from Forte Payment Systems is hereby accepted. Forte Payment Systems hereby retains processed payments for real property taxes under the service fee pricing, which is listed below.
Second.
That would be dated as of July twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Eleven sixty is to authorize CPF Water Quality Fund for the twenty twenty-two Round One Project, Main Street Tavern, and that would be in the amount of
Eighty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty.
Eighty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty.
Can we have a conversation?
Sure, absolutely. You would like to discuss this?
Um, so my understanding is that the tavern has closed and so, and been sold to another entity?
First of all, I'm gonna be recusing myself
Okay.
of this conversation.
Okay. Um, you know, before this was awarded, we had planning and building and code enforcement go out and take a look and make sure that they were in compliance with everything. I don't know what the plans are for the new. I don't know what the plans are for the new tavern, if they need to go through the planning department, if they need to. So I don't know how to handle this one.
So I spoke to Kim this morning about that. She said that they're open again. So it hasn't been confirmed that it's been sold and that what we could do is adopt this resolution. And if in fact, there is a new buyer, then we would amend the resolution. There is no income, you know, level with these grants. I mean, so I'm comfortable after speaking to Kim, moving forward with this resolution. And if there, if it in fact was sold, we get confirmation of that, it would be, we would need to amend the resolution.
Yeah, because right now they're under the dining program, outdoor dining program. And they, so there are some, some parameters here that I would like to see to make sure. So, you know, I'm comfortable with going ahead if we don't know what the outcome is and amending if we have to in the future.
Yeah, and I think the important thing to remember here is that this is a restaurant use
Yep.
in an area where, you know, we need to continually improve the septic treatment quality. And it's, it's unlikely that this business would operate as anything but a restaurant. And so I don't think the need will change just because ownership may change. And certainly if something else comes up, we can work to amend the resolution to adjust to that. But I would support moving forward at this time with the grant.
I agree. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recused.
We do a roll call, please, Carol?
Aye.
Recused.
Aye. Yes. Thank you, Jim.
Bye.
Aye, pass and carry. So what does that bring us up to?
Eleven sixty-one.
Eleven sixty-one is authorized amendment to the license agreement for the ELRAC LLC Enterprise for airport parking spaces. And this would be, this authorizes the supervisor, well, let's see. Whereas the enterprise shall pay the town license fee of forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars, fifty cents for twenty twenty-two with a four percent escalation for twenty twenty-three, which rates have been prorated, prorated if revoked earlier. The supervisor is authorized to execute the amendment of twenty sixteen license agreement with ELRAC LLC Enterprise in the form approved by the Office of Town Attorney. And that again is for elects to close, if the, if the town elects to close or modify the use of the airport at a rate of forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars, fifty cents for twenty twenty-two, forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents for twenty twenty-three, which rate shall be prorated if such earlier revocation occurs.
Have they paid for twenty twenty-two?
I believe they're in good standing.
Okay. It just references that, that the way it's referenced in this resolution made me ask the question.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. There are additional resolutions?
I have Resolution twenty twenty-two, eleven sixty-two, its approval of various special event permits. First one is Father Liam McDonald, the Church of Saint Therese in Montauk. They're having a celebration of the Feast of Saint Therese on Saturday, October first from ten AM to four thirty, and they're going to be closing South Essex between Montauk Highway and South Etna. The Montauk Chamber of Commerce is hosting their Montauk Chamber Annual Fall Festival on the Montauk Green. That's Saturday, October eighth and Sunday, October ninth, ten AM to five PM. Carol, there's a typo here. It should be Saturday and Sunday. Then we have the Art Center at Duck Creek, a poetry reading on Sunday, September twenty-fifth from two to four. Again, Duck Creek Artist Talk, Wednesday, October second from two to four. Duck Creek Memorial Workshop, Saturday, October eighth and ninth from ten AM to two PM. And Duck Creek Crit Week, and that's Tuesday, October eighteenth through Thursday, October twentieth from ten AM to four PM. So I'd like to do this as amended with that one correction for Sunday for the chamber.
Second as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Twenty twenty-two, eleven sixty-three is a local law to amend Chapter two twenty-five taxation, amend the income levels for exemptions for senior citizens and persons with disabilities and limited incomes. We discussed this at Tuesday's work session. The public hearing would be Thursday, October sixth at two PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution twenty twenty-two, eleven sixty-four is to adopt amendments to the Chapter two fifty-five zoning regarding personal wireless service facilities. We heard this on September first, twenty twenty-two. And this is to amend various sections of the code throughout for personal wireless service facilities.
Second.
Could we also just say that we did make a non-substantive clarification regarding setbacks, which was amended for clarity. Eric had sent that around on the eighth of September.
Thank you for mentioning that, Kathy. And this, the board finds adoption of proposed law will not have a significant adverse environmental impact and hereby adopts negative declaration pursuant to seeker under Chapter one twenty-eight Town Code and further resolve that the proposed law is hereby adopted to read as attached.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Are there any other resolutions or matters spring before the board? Matt, do we have any callers on the line?
No, there's been zero callers throughout the whole meeting.
Undertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Stay safe and be.